Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Select Board Public Hearing of February 26. I'm Tom McCain, the Chair of the Select Board this year. We have a number of articles. We're going to do one out of order as it's a citizen petition, and we thought it would be only fair to have her go first. So, where is she? There you are. Come forward. It's Beverly Bryant, and it's the adoption of a moratorium on synthetic turf on town property.
Great, thank you. Beverly Bryant, 175 Conan Street, representing the Concord group Grass Fields for Safe Sports. I am petitioning the Town of Concord for a three-year moratorium on the installation of synthetic turf on town land. This is an extension of the moratorium put in place at the 2016 town meeting. Town land includes but is not limited to that of the Concord public schools. The moratorium does not include private land, nor the Concord Carlisle Regional High School, which is under joint jurisdiction with Carlisle. So what is synthetic turf? It was originally promoted to dispose of old tires. Discarded tires are ground up into tiny pellets called crumb rubber. These pellets are not coated with anything or in any way rendered inert. They are loosely held in place in a plastic carpet to produce playing fields. So why the moratorium? Crumb rubber contains known carcinogens and endocrine disruptors which interfere with child development, particularly that which is under hormonal control. The chemicals found in Concord's fields include those you see here. The first four are carcinogens, including benzopyrene, which have been banned from tires in Europe because they are highly carcinogenic, but they are still used in America. The last chemical listed is an endocrine disruptor that blocks the function of the male hormone androgen. Endocrine disruptors are damaging to children even in minute concentrations. There are many other chemicals in crumb rubber that have never been investigated and for which there is no data available. To have these chemicals in close contact with children is a major concern. Children are more susceptible to both carcinogens and hormone disruptors since their bodies are still developing. These chemicals can be absorbed through the skin, inhaled during gassing off of the rubber on hot days, and accidentally swallowed. Crumb rubber is also carried home on clothing, in hair, and in shoes. Also, young siblings play with the crumb rubber on the fields while their parents are watching the games. In response to the growing health concerns around synthetic turf nationwide, four U.S. congressmen from the Committee on Energy and Commerce and two U.S. senators wrote letters of inquiry regarding the safety of synthetic turf to the Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA. They asked very specific questions about health and safety which have yet to be answered. The Consumer Product Safety Commission, the CPSC, has not rated synthetic turf or crumb rubber as a child-safe product, and the EPA has stopped promoting crumb rubber in synthetic turf fields. The EPA, the CPSC, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry together have launched the Federal Research Action Plan to study crumb rubber and its effects on human health. This report has not yet been released, and research has been held up by delays and reductions in the appropriation of funding. Recent research has shown a 16 percent increase in leg and foot injuries amongst National Football League athletes playing on synthetic turf compared to natural grass because synthetic turf does not release cleats as readily as natural turf. As a result of such injuries, some clubs, for example, the Baltimore Ravens, are replacing their synthetic turf fields with natural grass. Recent improvements in grass varieties have led to grasses that can stand up to hard use and drought conditions and can be managed organically without pesticides or herbicides. A University of Missouri study has shown that organically managed fields are 25 percent cheaper to maintain than regular grass fields and half the overall cost of synthetic turf fields. Synthetic turf fields also have an environmental impact. Crumb rubber particles do not remain in the plastic carpet but are washed out during heavy rain or snowstorms and migrate in the runoff from the fields. This can be seen in both the Douglas White Fields and the stadium field. Three to five percent of the infill is lost from each field every year. As the plastic carpet deteriorates over time, the filaments break off and also migrate from the fields. In addition, water draining through synthetic turf fields contains elevated levels of zinc, chromium, copper, and phthalates. Synthetic turf thus pollutes an area extending some distance from the fields. The construction of synthetic turf fields works against the sustainability principles adopted by the town in 2011, by replacing an organic ecosystem with toxic chemicals that bleed into the environment and by preventing these fields from capturing carbon from the atmosphere or from retaining water from heavy rain events. A Canadian study calculated that 1,861 trees would be required to offset the carbon footprint of one synthetic turf field for the duration of its use. In conclusion, we are asking the town to adopt another three-year moratorium to allow the ongoing research on synthetic turf to be completed, to protect our children from exposure to untested and toxic chemicals, and to better assess the environmental impact of synthetic turf fields in a time of changing climate. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next items are item Article One and Article Two. Article One is choose town officers, all necessary town officers and committees. Article Two is to hear and act upon reports of the town officers and committees. These are usually part of the consent agenda, and so I'm assuming that we're not going to have any major discussion on them. And that will then lead us to Article Number 19, General Bylaw Amendment of Town Meeting Notices. Time, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me see. I recognize that the text on the Warren article doesn't fit—of the Warren article doesn't fit properly on this slide as per the request of the town moderator. So at town meeting, there will be a handout for this article because the motion will exceed 100 words, so I apologize for squeezing it on there. Article 19 requests that the town vote to amend our general bylaw governing the notice provided to the public of a planned town meeting. We propose to eliminate the antiquated form of notice—and antiquated form of notice, and in certain places, there are a notification mechanism that's in more common usage today. Slide Two. The Town Meeting Notice Bylaw currently requires that the Select Board post notice of a planned town meeting in at least one public location in each precinct in Concord. We're proposing to eliminate that phrase. This slide shows the location in each precinct where the town meeting warrant is currently posted in order to comply with the bylaw. We don't believe that checking these locations is the most likely or convenient way which the public learns about a town meeting and takes the opportunity to review the warrant and find out what business is being proposed for discussion. We are proposing instead posting the warrant in the building shown on the previous slide that the town be required to post the town meeting warrant electronically on the town's website, as is shown here in green. The town's website provides a vast amount of information about the conduct of town meeting, including the warrant and videos from prior town meetings. The bylaw will continue to require that the town meeting warrant be posted at the town clerk's bulletin board in the townhouse, and that a copy shall be sent by mail to every Concord household. For the special town meeting held last October 1st, we posted the warrant in the precinct locations, those five buildings, 13 days prior to the special town meeting, not the requisite 14 days. This error required the town to secure a special act of Massachusetts Legislature declaring that the votes taken at that special town meeting were valid, notwithstanding the technical noncompliance problem. The Town Meeting Notice Bylaw was first adopted in 1905. There were two minor modifications and amendments to the bylaw since 1905, and perhaps it's time to update the bylaw. Happy to answer any questions. Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, shall I move?
Questions or comments? And why don't we move?
To Article 20. Thank you, Heather. As with the previous slide, this text of the article does not fit properly onto this slide, and that's because I'm showing the strike-through language, which will be eliminated in the motion that's made at town meeting. I have put on the back table tonight a one-page handout that contains the full text of the current records management bylaw. Article 20 proposes that the town vote to delete the entire second paragraph of the bylaw and replace it with new language as shown in Article 20. The Concord Records Management Bylaw was adopted under Article 42 of the April Annual Town Meeting in 1990. A new Massachusetts Public Records Law took effect in January of 2000—January 1st, 2017, which requires cities and towns to promptly and fully respond to the public's request for public records. The new law gives a central role to the town clerk, which the statute refers to as the municipal clerk. In a municipality—it can be challenging for the public to determine which department is likely to be holding a given record, and the town clerk's job is to assist the public in locating those records. Adoption of Article 42 would update Concord's Records Management Bylaw to help town officials in complying with the new state public records law. We are proposing to eliminate the language providing that the Select Board shall designate a library employee as the municipal archivist, and the language that says that the municipal archivist shall have oversight over the town's records. We're proposing replacing that language with wording "Providing that the town manager shall appoint a municipal archivist," and for the archivist to report to the town clerk, who shall be responsible for the town's records in compliance with the state law. I think this is more consistent with the new public records law. So the Public Records Management Bylaw is now nearly 30 years old. It's due for updating. Additional updates may be needed in the future once we have a full-time municipal archivist getting to work with the town clerk to devise a new system for modernizing our record-keeping strategy, which would include archiving, storage, and retrieval. Happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions, anybody? Why not?
Thank you.
We now move to Article 21, the Authorization to Accept Mass General Laws, Chapter 54, Section 16A, Election Vacancy Appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I'm Kari Maitari, Town Clerk. Article 21 asks town meeting to accept the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 54, Section 16A, in order to allow the town clerk to appoint substitute election officers on election day in the event of last-minute cancellations. Here's the law. This applies only to the particular election for which a substitute is needed. The Select Board is the appointing authority for election officers. The term of election officers is for one year. This law will not change the appointing authority. Adoption of this article will allow the town clerk to better manage election days with full staffing regardless of last-minute cancellations. Each precinct requires two inspectors—or checkers, as we call them, one warden and one clerk. That adds up to 40 people across five precincts, working from 6:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. Some folks do work the full day, but for the most part, people are working in half-day shifts, so the need is really much higher than 40 people. There are currently 85 people appointed as election officers, but they're not always available to work every election. Last-minute cancellations can lead to staffing shortages that lead to more juggling of tasks, leading to longer lines, and more stress for both voters and workers. Currently, the only way to allow a willing voter to work at the polls is through appointment by the Select Board, but Select Board meetings don't always coincide with election days. At the state election last fall, we were lucky that we had a Select Board meeting on Monday before the state election, and we took full advantage of that, unfortunately. This article is limited to allowing a substitute for an election worker who is scheduled to work on that particular day only. That worker has to be from the same party as the absent officer, and this only applies if a cancellation occurs and the next Select Board meeting is scheduled after the election. Acceptance of this law, this local option statute, will allow the town clerk to recruit and appoint a substitute right up to the beginning of the absent officer's shift. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Not seen any? We will move on. Thank you. The next—we have a set of four warrant articles regarding affordable housing. The first one is Number 23, which is appropriate funds for the affordable housing development. Is—I saw Todd here a moment ago. I think we're going so quickly, he must have assumed that—
One minute.
One minute. One minute, okay. Everybody can take a stretch.
I'm going to do Kate. Move ahead to 27.
Why don't we do—up, here he is. Todd, you're onboard.
This is a very efficient group tonight.
Yes. Number 23 will start you out, and I'll let you take the next four.
Okay. Yep, I've got my presentation here. All right. All right. Okay. Well, hello, everyone. Thanks for giving me the time to speak to everybody tonight. So I see a lot of familiar faces in the room, so I won't go through all of the introductory things, but I just have a couple there for some folks who may be joining us for the first time. So what you see up above there is the charge for the Affordable Housing Funding Committee. Why am I putting that up? Well, the background of how we got to where we are today is the Affordable Housing Funding Committee made some recommendations to the Select Board. Those recommendations resulted in the warrants that you see there. So the Affordable Housing Funding Committee was charged with coming up with some cost-effective means by which we could help to continue expanding the inventory of affordable homes in Concord. Let me see here. Same remote as last time. Perfect. In doing that, in coming up with the recommendations that we presented to the Select Board, it really was a community-wide effort. You see up there some of the organizations in town that we spoke to that provided some valuable insight and guidance into the articles resulting in the articles that you see in the warrant. In addition to this, we reached out to many residents in town. We also reached out to residents and town employees in other communities in the Commonwealth who've gone through this process in one way or another. So one of the things that kind of guided our perspective is what you see here is kind of taking a wide perspective, a wide view as to how do we address this challenge? And we wanted to make sure that we didn't focus too heavily on any one group. That was one of our guiding principles. Another guiding principle was the fact that residents wanted to have more control over affordable homes so that they could best fit in the community. And that ties into everybody's feeling of how cherished the town character is. And that was something that really kind of guided our perspective, too, is how do we do this in a way that hopefully we can be implemented quickly so that residents can have more control over the process? And then the last thing you see up there is that this truly is a process, and you'll see that a little bit further in the presentation. And that is why we must start this process now. A lot of you probably know that this has been a conversation in town for many years now, and we've made some great progress, and we've really come a long way, and we're highly regarded in the affordable housing community for all the work we've done, but we still need to keep moving forward because the goalposts keep moving forward, if you—if, so to speak, in terms of the sustainable housing inventory, et cetera. So what does more control bias? Well, hopefully, one thing that it biases us is, A, helping to maintain the character of the town, but one thing hopefully it helps us avoid is some of the contentiousness that other towns have seen in their communities. So a couple of the projects that are right on our doorstep that you may have heard about are Quarry North and Powder Mill Place in our neighboring communities. And so I didn't—I wanted to share just a couple of quick pictures of those proposed projects. So this is Quarry North. Let me see if I can get my—the red dot is the pointer, right? Okay, great. So right here, up here is White Pond, and over in this neck of the woods would be Russini's and Nishawattik Country Club in that area. This is a little bit better picture where you can see where this will be going here. White Pond, Willard Elementary School. Here is—the red pin drop here is Quarry North. The next one is Powder Mill Place, and again, you see that depicted here by the pin drop there, and this is Route 62. You see this right here is Valley Sports, the ice skating rink over on Route 62. And over here, right in that neck of the woods, should be the Thoreau Club, if I have my pointer correct there, right in that area. So that is one of—the—and then the actual—the last picture here is these two in conjunction. So we have Quarry North over here, Powder Mill Place over here, and you can see there where they are in conjunction to Concord. Now, I'm not opining on whether these are good projects or bad projects, but I think from the tenor and all the conversations that I've been involved in and that many people have been involved in, it seems like Concord would like to have a little bit more control of how we grow and how we do this in a smart and sustainable way, and by starting this process now, that helps get us there. So where does that leave us? Well, I think that we've got a little—sorry here. There we go. Sorry about that. So a couple of the things is that by starting now, the benefits are control—we have more control from the residents. Another point about starting now are the economic benefits of providing affordable homes. So you see here a couple of the key things, and of course, affordable homes helps attract employers to local businesses, including town businesses, which is a huge benefit. A lot of us really value that the local businesses that are in our town, in Concord and in West Concord, and how do we keep that happening? How do we sustain that? Well, affordable homes are an important way to do that. One of the other things that I think is really eye-opening about the information on this slide is point number four. Of Concord's 277 employees, only about 9 percent live in town. And I think we have to ask ourselves, well, what is the reason for that? And there are a lot of reasons, but we can't avoid the fact that one of the big reasons is affordability of homes in town. So that's something I think we should really look at. The other point I would just mention that is perhaps a little bit slightly counterintuitive is point number three, and that is that by having affordable homes in a community, you actually increase the revenue in the community and decrease traffic. So let's think about these 277 town employees. About 250 of them are commuting to town every day, so that's increasing traffic, that's increasing congestion on the roads. That increase in congestion has an operating cost liability, if you will, to the businesses in town. With more congestion, it takes longer for goods and services to get to where they need to go. People who want to perhaps avail themselves of those businesses may be disincentivized to go through that traffic to get to those businesses. So there's kind of a cost there, if you will, for not having affordable homes in town. So Article 23. One thing I wanted to point out—a couple of things I wanted to point out about Article 23 that is important to keep in mind as we go into the discussion—is that this is something that must be voted on at each town—at each future town meeting. It's meant to be a temporary strategy. It's something that we have the funds for currently in free cash, and that once the other strategies are in place, this strategy can either be kept, it can be reduced, or it can be diminished. And that's something that's important to think—to keep in mind as we look at this article in more depth. The next thing I wanted to be sure to point out is that for the other three articles, they are very much a process-driven function, and right now, we are on step one, which is essentially authorizing the town to talk to the state. If that goes through, then the town has—makes a presentation to the state. The state decides whether or not to allow the town's request for these articles. If the state does allow it, then it comes back to the town, and we have to go back to town meeting again. So the point here is that this is a process. It's not vote for these articles right now, and everything is done, and it's implemented immediately. That would be—that would be great, but that's not the way it works. So this is really—we have to look at this as, are we willing to let the town have a conversation with the state to try to help—to help the town and the residents reach the goals that everybody has said they want to have for the town? Whenever we have conversations about affordable housing at all the town meetings I've been at, everybody steps up and says, "I'm in favor of affordable housing. We believe in affordable housing." Well, now's the chance to really show it and mean it, because this is how we have to get there. So Article 23. This is the article—the language you see here is right from the article. The key things here is that this article is asking for $500,000 from free cash, and you can see that right there. Again, a couple of the things that I want to point out about this is that this only occurs if free cash is higher than 5 percent. So why is 5 percent important? 5 percent is the benchmark by which bond rating agencies look to to make sure that a town has enough cushion, enough free cash cushion. And of course, that's important because we want to maintain our AAA bond rating. So if we don't have more than 5 percent, then this doesn't—this isn't relevant. We do have more than 5 percent. We actually have close to 12 percent, probably 11 to 12 percent. So this is well within the ranges of conservative town fiscal policy. Also, as it's—as you can see here, it's annually requesting, and it's until such time as the revenues that are generated from Articles 24, 25, and 26 are approved and start to flow. So that is the tenor of the town now. Tom, did you want me to stop here, or do you want me to keep going?
Questions, I think, now?
All right.
Any comments or questions? Please step up to the mic and identify yourself.
Leanne K., 262, Virginia Road. I just have a few questions. I want to know, what is our current percentage of homes in Concord that are affordable? Then I was wondering, how much acreage do we have in Concord that you can build affordable housing on? My understanding that most of the town's residential land has already been developed. So if it's developed, where would you put affordable housing if you don't have land?
And your first question was about what do we have currently? What's the slate of affordable? So currently, we have 10.5 percent of our housing stock that is considered to be affordable. That meets the state's subsidized housing inventory, and that's that magic 10 percent number that people look at for 40—Chapter 40B purposes. So as of right now, we're okay. That can change. Of course, if Junction Village continues to go forward, then we'll still be in a good shape, but if it doesn't go forward, then that ratio—then we'll be under the 10 percent. So we'll find that out later this summer, I guess, when—if Junction Village is going to go forward. So in terms of that, let's see, as a number of units—I can—let me look at that because I think that's about—I have it right here. Just bear with me while I dig it out. At least I thought I had it with me. No, I don't have it. But that includes 357 units of market rate. So that 10.52 percent includes some market rate units, and that's how the sustainable housing—or subsidized housing inventory is factored. If we take out those 357 market rate units, then our effective—our true affordable housing number or percentage really goes to 5.31 percent. Yeah, 5.31 percent. So that's how we look at it. In terms of the actual number of units, we can—I can look that up and get that to you. I just don't have it off the top of my head right now. In terms of where would land be developed, currently, the town is looking at a couple of options, which would be smaller kind of developments, that might be three units here, three units there, kind of thing, and that's something that we've done in the past. Areas of potential development could be—if the middle schools—if things happen with the middle schools, does that allow for an opportunity for some housing to go into one of those areas? In terms of the actual number of units, we can, I can look that up and get that to you, I just don't have it off the top of my head right now. In terms of where would land be developed, currently, the town is looking at a couple of options, which would be smaller kind of developments, that might be three units here, three units there, kind of thing. And that's something that we've done in the past. Areas of potential development could be, if the middle schools, if things happen with the middle schools, does that allow for an opportunity for some housing to go into one of those areas? And then, of course, we never know when somebody is going to decide to sell a parcel of land. And by having funds available, hopefully, we can be involved in that decision to have some affordable homes in that area.
Dean Banfield, 73 Walden Terrace. I'm a member of the Finance Committee, but I'm just speaking to myself. If you could put Slide 10 back up here, the process through which, under the other articles, we would talk to the state?
This one?
The statement that's up there. Okay. So the language that would be looked at in any of the articles that have to go through this process is, there's specific language there. There are very detailed bylaw changes that would allow us to impose various forms of taxation. When we say we would talk to the state, does it open up a broad conversation, like, here's our intent, and this language is just a suggestion, and then the state comes back and says, we don't like these clauses, and they give us back other language, which we would then vote on to determine the details of the final articles? I just am not clear on how this discussion, so to speak, with the state would occur. So if you could clarify that, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I'm by no means an expert, but my understanding is that it would be a situation like you outlined, in terms of the town would say, here is what we're looking to, here's what we're proposing, this is what we'd like the state to allow us to do, and then I would expect that the state could come back and say, well, okay, you know, maybe this, but not that, or it's okay as written. So I would expect that any, anything, like any other kinds of legislation, that there would be some potential changes or some, you know, some, I think it really comes down to is, is how well is what's presented in line with the state's current thinking? How closely does it mirror what other communities have done? Because what we're looking at in some of the other articles is similar to what other communities have already done, and what some communities are currently looking to do. And so I think if we're closely aligned to what has already transpired, it would be easier for the state to approve it as is.
So I guess my, not to like, commandeer the floor here, but my question is, if we get into a detailed conversation at town meeting about this or that wording, or this or that intent, and we, you know, hammer it out, and maybe there's some small changes that are made on the floor, or made to what's being proposed, and we take that to the state, and the state says, well, how about this instead? Is it kind of a, okay, this is what the state is okay with, we have to kind of take it or leave it, and we have an up or down vote on it at that third point? I just, it's not clear how this conversation, because by the time it comes back, once it goes back on the floor of town meeting, town meeting isn't really in a position to determine the details, because the state has already made their decision and said, this is what we want you to pass.
Right, right.
So that's not really, we're not really in the position of determining much of anything at that point, I don't think. I mean, that doesn't feel that way to me. I'm just trying to clarify, because this is very muddy to me.
Okay. All right, the process is muddy, okay.
Janet Miller, 1647 Main Street. I'm on the Comprehensive Sustainability and Energy Committee, but I'm speaking for myself. I'm wondering if you do or can take into account the cost of actually living in an affordable dwelling? Because affordable housing tends to be built relatively cheaply, and relatively poorly insulated, and the energy costs are quite high. Is it possible to take that cost into consideration?
Sure, and I think you'd be surprised that currently, how affordable homes are constructed and how energy efficient they actually are. Because part of the focus around affordable homes is healthy outcomes, and is making sure that the homes in which people are living in are energy efficient, they are healthy, and that's part of the impact, if you will, part of the return on investment, if you will. So I think many people are surprised that the current way that affordable homes are constructed is generally very energy efficient, and is focused highly on those healthy outcomes. So I know in the past, that's been an issue, but a lot of the work that I've been involved and that I've seen is very much focused on energy efficiency, because when you think about the energy efficiency component, if you can help somebody who's living in an affordable home save $50 in their utility bill, that has a huge benefit to how, to their quality of life. So energy efficiency is not just looked at from a sustainability perspective, it's also looked at, A, for the health of the people living there, and B, for the financial health of those residents as well. So that's, that's something that's very relevant.
Tom Tarpey, 169 Heath's Bridge Road, Chair of the Finance Committee this year, but speaking for myself. And I hope the Chair will indulge me, because I've got at least three questions. As, this slide is my first question. Under the best of circumstances, how soon after we were to take an affirmative vote on your Articles 24 and 25, would we be done with the state process, and would we actually have mechanism in place that could start funding the process?
Yeah, that's a great question. I wish I had an answer for you, and I think part of that would depend on the Select Board's schedule and presenting it to the state, and getting some, getting it onto the legislators, the state legislator's calendar, and having them vote on it. I know Somerville is going through this process currently with one of their initiatives, and I don't know how long it's been for them to actually, in terms of when they've gotten to the point of presenting it to the state. I don't know, does anybody in the Select Board have better clarity on that?
I think the short answer is no, but my understanding is that it would be at least kind of a calendar year that we'd be lucky if we were able to do it by the next town meeting, and it really depends on the state legislature. They're not prone to act with great speed, so chances are, it might be as much as two or three years.
Okay, great. My next question has to do with the explanatory slide for Article 23, so if you could return that one.
This is the warrant article?
The one that's explaining, there you are. So I have seen this slide many times, and I'm sorry to say, I haven't asked the question every time it's occurred to me. Your top paragraph leaves me with the impression that potentially, we're voting to appropriate $500,000 each year. But am I correct in understanding that such an appropriation will take a new article at each town meeting, and will have to be moved at each town meeting subsequently? So I think
That is correct.
You would, I think you would help yourself if you made that clearer, because some other people may be as dense as I am. The second point goes to the second paragraph, and it says that the Select Board anticipates annually requesting. So this leaves me with the impression that the Select Board has already approved this, and I don't know whether that's the case, and maybe that's a question I should ask the Select Board rather than
We are not able to speak for the group each year, so I would say that that is a hopeful comment by the Affordable Housing Committee.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
My name is Richard Wenzel. I live on 125 Hillcrest Road in Concord. One of the questions I have, you had a slide with economic benefits.
Yep.
What are the costs to the town of this project, these projects?
Oh, so
It just can't be all positive. There are some costs.
Oh, sure.
One of them, I think, might be, aren't these units paid less property taxes?
I'm sorry, I
Aren't these things subsidized by people paying less property taxes in these units?
Well, so in some cases, if you have, first of all, if you have market rate units that are part of the affordable housing units, so let's say you have 100 units in total, and 75 of them are market rate units, and 25 of them are affordable units, well, the 75 units are paying property tax. The 25 units are paying perhaps a lower portion of the property tax, but they are paying property tax nonetheless.
Okay. Are there any other costs to the town?
Depends on how it's funded. So like anything, you know, you would look, there would be infrastructure costs that would be put into the development, to put into the construction of it. So it's hard to say if there would be any costs or not. So I don't know how to really answer that question. It would be like any commercial development. If somebody wants to build a new office building, you know, a lot of times, a developer will look to the town for leeway on our infrastructure costs, or leeway on permitting costs, or things like that. So I think it would be in that similar vein.
My second question is, what are the other towns around Concord doing in this field? My worry, my, the reason for asking this, my concern is, we go through these articles, you impose the fees for renovating houses and new developments, et cetera, and so when somebody comes to buy a property around here, Concord sellers are at a disadvantage. So are we the first people to do this, or are there some other towns? What is Acton doing? Maynard, Sudbury, everybody around us?
Well, so Acton and Maynard are not at their 10% level, Acton, Maynard, and Sudbury. So that's why they are having these projects, these 40B projects in their communities. So what they're doing is not as proactive, potentially, as what we're looking to do, because right now, Concord is in a great scenario, in a great situation to be able to have more control over the discussion as to how we meet these needs, versus being in a situation where we don't have that luxury of time, where we don't have that luxury of being able to help to frame the conversation of how affordable housing is implemented.
Okay, thank you. The last question I have is, the thing that bothers me about allocating the money every year is, there are a lot of priority items that could come up. People have different priorities. One of them for me is, I live in West Concord, and about five years ago, a woman donated funds for an ambulance, and it was going to be fully staffed, 24 hours, seven days a week, within three or four years. And now, we're about five or six years after the fact, and other priorities have come up, and it's not a full 24 hours, seven day a week function, and it keeps getting pushed back because
That is in the budget for this year.
So my concern is, by putting in an article like this, where you're saying, every year we're going to consider this subject, it really gives a priority to this subject, to the denigration of any other priorities that may come up. So for that reason, it bothers me, and I think maybe there could be a better way of wording it.
Okay. Well, just to be clear, this would have to be voted on at town meeting every year, as Mr. Tarpey pointed out. So in that case, if people felt that way, then perhaps it may not pass one year, but it is something that would be up for discussion annually at town meeting.
Yeah, I would prefer it just to be an under-the-table, implied sort of thing, rather than formally stated.
Yeah.
But anyway, that's one opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Charlie Blair, 26 Florio Drive. Full disclosure, I'm a Realtor in Concord. Couple of questions. I know they have a number of 500, but it also says any other sum in the article, so that, as far as, you mentioned Somerville, Somerville's on the second year, and they still don't have a decision yet, and they did a home rule petition. When are we talking about the home rule petition that would be presented to the state after the third or the second time, or how, where would that come into effect? Because that's when you get the answer from the state.
So my understanding of that is that, once the articles are affirmatively passed at town meeting, that that would give the Select Board the ability to petition the state for that home rule petition?
The home rule petition, yeah.
That would be the step two.
And then, because I know Somerville's at the second year, theirs is a lot different than what we're talking about. Theirs is mostly commercial, and there's a $2 million exemption, up to $2 million on residential, so it's a total different package than what we're talking about. Cambridge is doing the same thing. The other question that I had was, the slide you had, where you had the Quarry, North Quarry, and the Acton, and the
Go back to that one.
Sudbury and the Maynard one. And we talked about the North Quarry, and we talked about Powder Mill, well, of course, in between the two is ours, which is the Concord Muse. So you might want to even slide that in, that's exactly in between the two. And one other question, I've never hear from anybody, what's the accepted amount of affordable housing that we're talking about long-term for Concord? What percentage are we talking about, that everybody would be satisfied with? I know we have that 10% number that's out there, but is that what the affordable housing groups are looking at 10, or are they looking at 20? Nobody seems to come up with a number of what that is. And I really would like to have somebody come up with some kind of parameter of what that number is. And with that, we have other funding sources right now that could be used. One Community Preservation Act, we're at one and a half, that could be moved up, that includes affordable housing. And the other thing is, we have a plan, production plan, that Marcia Rasmussen and her staff have put together every five years, that's been accepted by the state, and that gives us a situation, if we were below the 10%, that we could build some affordable housing through 40B, that would give us extra years of 40B, of unwanted 40Bs. So we would have some plans with that. So we do have a plan in place. The other question that I think you should really consider is, in that Plan Production Plan, there's a population piece that shows that in, we're always, everybody out there in the news right now is talking 12 years from now, we're all going to be gone, but 12 years from now, Concord's over 55 population is around at least a third or more of what the Concord population is today, in that there's probably some really good advantages there to do some things, either with some accessory housing in small houses that are existing now to keep people in Concord. We could do a lot of things that I think we should be really looking at at this particular time. Thank you.
Well, thanks, and you know, zoning is such an important concept, or an important point for affordable solutions to affordable homes, and it was one of the things that was outside the purview of the committee, but it's something that has to have a role in the solution. I just would want to point out that the committee did look at increasing the CPA allocation from 1.5% to 3%. The committee felt that that wasn't a prudent way to go, because it would increase the property tax for everybody, and the benefit for that would not be as significant as we could achieve through other means. So that was one thing that we looked at. We looked at it a lot of different ways, but we felt that the cost-benefit analysis of doing that was not, was not strong enough.
Good evening. I'm Tom Matthews, 135 Elsinore Street. I'm on the Board of Assessors, and I'm also a Realtor, but I'm speaking for myself tonight. But I want to start by thanking you for serving on this committee. You know, affordable housing, it's really hard to come up with ideas to raise money for affordable housing, and I think the Article 23 is a great idea, take money from free cash. It's more the further, 24 and 25 is my biggest issue. But I wanted to just come up here and support you for the efforts you've done, because I think it's really important to tackle this, and I will save my comments on the transfer tax when you speak about that article, but I just want to thank you for your time.
All right. Thanks, Tom. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Mark White, 233 Independence Road. On page eight, you had the benefits of affordable housing.
Yeah.
Could you explain the, how that increases revenue?
Sure. So, and you can see the reference there. So this was a study done by Cambridge Systematics, and one of the things that they mentioned about increasing the revenue is that, A, these properties pay tax, so there's tax revenue that's going to the town. Also, when we have folks who are in the town, they're actually using the goods and services of the local businesses. So that's also something that is adding, you know, increasing revenues that way. So those are a couple of things that they looked at in their analysis.
But that's going to be a residence that's already occupied, so you would be getting the people purchasing products at the town, but I think that with what's paid for real estate taxes, I think the town would be paying more for the services of that property than they'd be receiving.
You know, I think that's debatable. There is a lot of, the Joint Center for Housing at Harvard did a great study on this, looking at some of the misperceptions of multifamily housing, and when we talk about affordable homes, oftentimes, it is multifamily. We do in Concord have scattered site homes, which are resident, you know, single families, and that is part of the equation going forward. single families, and, and that is part of the equation going forward. But generally speaking, when we look at multifamily homes, the, the costs are, the cost matrix, the cost function is, is, is different than what a lot of people feel. So, for example, if we think about a multifamily project that has a hundred units, let's say, the cost of infrastructure to, to service those 100 units is far less than the cost of infrastructure to serve 100 individual homes. So in a something like, in a situation like that, the town would actually be saving money on services, you know. And so, I mean, we could go on, and there are other examples. But, but it, it is an eye-opening perspective on some of the, the scalability of cost savings for multifamily homes.
I think once you add a school-aged child into that matrix, though, I think the costs go up quite a bit.
Well, that's a great point, and they did look at that as well. And what they found is that, generally speaking, single-family homes provide more of a burden on school systems than multifamily homes do. And part of the reason is, when builders construct multifamily homes, generally families want three-bedroom apartments. Well, that's great, but generally speaking, builders will only put a certain number of three-bedroom apartments in, in a multifamily complex because of the, the economics of it. So there are, there are many examples of where, there's actually a great example in Wellesley, where there was the, the, and I'll have to, I can provide it, it's not a problem, but the anticipated number of school-aged children in the, in the, in the complex was actually less, or the, I'm sorry, the anticipated number was greater than what it actually turned out to be. And when we look at the cost of, of student enrollment and such, what we're, what we actually see is that the, the cost of adding one more student to a particular classroom, or two more students, that marginal cost, as long as there's capacity in the school system, is negligible.
Final point, I think if we took the projected students for the muse, and what we were projecting, and what actually, the number of students are there, I think you're going to find there's a lot more students there than what was anticipated.
Okay. All right, we'll move on. So that's Article 23. Article 24. So this is, kind of answers the question of what happens to the funds? What, what does, where do these, where do these funds go? And so they go into an affordable housing trust fund. This is, and again, this has to go through the same process that, that we saw previously, this three-step process. It won't be labor that. One of, I guess a couple of points to, to pick out of this slide is that this is comprised of a board of trustees. It's not one or two people who are merely overseeing this. This is a structure that is a well-used structure throughout Massachusetts. There are over 70 municipalities that utilize this structure. There are many guidelines for implementing this structure. It's meant to create transparency. It's meant to be open dialogue. One of the things that is also important to point out about this is that the town treasurer would be, would be, I guess, the custodian of the trust. So they would be involved in it. So it's not one or two people kind of running the show here. It is a, it is a board function here. So, are there any questions on Article 24? Kind of the funding, or the, the vehicle that holds the funds? Okay, great. This, Article 25 was too long of an article to print out here, so, but you do have it in, in the handout if, if you've got that. But Article 25, again, has to go through the same exact process that we talked about before, three-step process. And affirmative action on this allows the town to, to speak to the state about this. So what is Article 25? So this is the real estate transfer tax article. You can see here that this is not a new concept. There are over 35 states that have this. One of the things that the committee was surprised to learn is that Massachusetts has one of the lowest transfer tax rates in New England. So, so that was something that we thought was very, very surprising. Our transfer tax rate is .0456%, right in line with Maine and Rhode Island, as a matter of fact. This is also a strategy that was recommended by the Concord Long Range Plan, so some of you may have seen it in that document also. It is something that other communities have implemented. It's been successful for open space and land use and, and other uses. So here is an example of some of the towns that do, that have implemented supplementary transfer fees. You can see that Barnstable County and Cape Cod, there are 15 towns that utilize this. And they have a local transfer charge and a state transfer fee, which is similar to what we would be looking at. And then also, you see that there, that Martha's Vineyard in Nantucket have a 2% transfer fee, which is, is over and above what we would be looking at with this strategy. With this strategy, we would be, we would have the state .0456% fee, and, and then the, and then the town local surcharge, which would be 1%, which would be paid by the buyer of real estate. All right. One of the things that was mentioned earlier is Somerville. Somerville is looking at this process, and, and they've, they've had, actually, a consultant, RKG, look at their, the impact of a real estate transfer fee in Somerville. And what RKG did is, they went around and, and they interviewed a wide array of real estate professionals. And they asked them, "What do you think the impact of this would be?" And you see in the second bullet point there, that for the real estate professionals interviewed, they unanimously said that a 1% transfer fee would not substantially change the behavior of buyers and sellers, or impact the volume of transactions. So, and again, what we will be looking at would be a 1% fee as well, 1% surcharge, if you will. So, that is, and here you see, actually, it's, you can't really, it's a, this is the transfer fees of New England states. And as you can see, Massachusetts is there with a 0.456%. So our number is consistent, again, with Maine and Rhode Island. Even if we did implement this, it would still be a little bit below New Hampshire's. So Article 25. Can we pause there?
Tom Matthews, again, 135 Elsinore Street. So I want to start with this, this right here, the state transfer tax. It's hard to implement a home rule 1% fee and compare it to the state. Because with the state, you have no choice. Like, you're going to pay this fee, it's the right to play the game, in any of the 351 towns and cities to sell real estate in Massachusetts. But I don't think it's fair for you to make an argument that this is something to compare to when implementing a home rule 1% fee. And if you can go back a couple of slides to the towns you're comparing us to--
Yeah.
So, as I said, I'm a Realtor with Sotheby's. And most of these communities are dominated by second homes, people owning second homes. Where Concord's 91% residents, primary residents. And I think one of the considerations that hasn't been taken into consideration is the transfers within town. Like, close to 30% of the sales in Concord happen from people. I bought a 1,400-square-foot ranch to get into Concord, paid 600 grand for it, too, affordable. And if I wanted to move up in town, you're now saying that I'm going to have to pay a fee to move within town. So, I mean, this is kind of discriminatory towards young people, because statistically speaking, young people move the most. And I think this is really unfair. And the other thing is, in name, this is being said that this fee will be paid for by the buyer. But sellers here in this room, if you own a house over $2 million in Concord, and houses are sitting on the market for a year to a year and a half, and if a buyer was told they have to pay a $20,000 fee, I've been selling real estate for 17 years, I know the seller will do whatever they have to do to sell that property. And I think this could really do a lot of harm to Concord. And I just don't think it's been vetted out and thought about enough. And we really should consider talking about it more than just putting it at town, at the town meeting like this. Because this is very aggressive. My friend and I ran a regression model on this, looking at five years of Concord sales. Most of the sales in Concord happen under $800,000. There's like a 93% chance that if you implement one-point difference on the sale of a house in Concord, it could triple the time it takes to sell a house that's over $1.5 million. That's a powerful number for people to think about. Because the, the other thing that concerns me is that if Lexington, and Acton, and Maynard, and the surrounding towns are not doing this transfer tax, we are betting the equity we've saved in our houses that our town is stronger than those communities. And that's not a bet I'm willing to make.
Well, and, you know, one of the things that, that I think is worth keeping in mind is that perhaps those communities will implement something like this. You know, we, we don't know what, what the future holds for those communities. But as affordable housing becomes more and more of, of an, of an, an issue in communities, and as communities start to look at ways that they can proactively fund affordable housing, they may very well follow Concord's lead in this regard, so that they can have more control over the process than having a 40B or, or a situation where they don't have the control.
Hi, I'm Elise Woodward. I live on Garfield Road. So my question is a logistical question. You were talking about four articles, and I think it would be helpful if you could be clear about whether this is a smorgasbord, we could choose any one of them, or whether Article 23 must be approved before Article 24, or 25, or 26 be approved. Also, a related question, will the select board have to go to the state for every one of these articles? Or could, for example, Article 24 be approved at town meeting, and we would therefore just establish the, the Housing Trust Fund?
Right, so--
That's my--
Great, no, thank you. And it is meant to be severable, if you will.
My understanding is that both Article 23 and Article 24, if voted on at town meeting, the funds from Article 23 would be able to be put into the trust fund developed in Article 24, would not require state action. 25 and 26 do require state action. A vote then at another town meeting, and then, I believe, also a town-wide vote, assuming that the town meeting passed.
Rick Laughlin, 83 Chestnut Street. In full disclosure, I spent 40 years in residential real estate, both in Concord and New England. One question, Todd, on your report, which I've read three times. I would give the committee a great deal of plaudits in the fact that it was very comprehensible. You covered most of the specific issues. One of the questions that came up today, as I read it for the third time, and I checked some data back in 2016, where there was an aberration of the sales volume. It appears there were a lot of commercial sales in that particular year. Are we talking about any commercial property being involved in this transfer tax?
So that is something that, that did, that did arise. And the original intention was that commercial property would be included. It appears that that was omitted when the warrant was drafted. So that is something that, that perhaps would be, would be added at a later point. I don't, Tom, do you have perspective on how that would be addressed?
Well, as I understand, the article as drafted was, when it went to town council, used the language that had been approved in Somerville, which was residential, and so did not include the commercial. But I may be not correct on--
So, from reading the report, Todd, quite frankly, your numbers include land and commercial, it's not just residential. So there's some adjustments that have to be made on those particular fees, if you go in that direction.
Yeah.
I'd like to get a little granular, although previous speakers have stolen some of my thunder. One of which is the competitive disadvantage that a transfer tax will, will put upon sellers in this town. Other communities that we certainly work with or are comparable with, you know, Sudbury, Weston, Acton, Lexington, et cetera, if they don't have a transfer tax, it certainly impacts the value of our properties. The other thing, real estate transaction over the years, and as I said, I've spent 40 years in the industry, it used to go to closings, and the amount of papers were that high. Now they're about six inches high, with disclosures, et cetera. So, one of the facts that'll have to happen in any real estate transaction is, we have to disclose to any buyer at some point in the transaction that there's a fee involved. And I would hope that the real estate industry will take that under serious advisement, in the fact that it needs to be brought out as soon as possible in any transaction. The real estate transaction is, is also, in my opinion, become far more complex. We not only have the negotiation of a price, we have contingencies, we have disclosures, and for the warrant article to say that the buyer will pay the fee is a pipe train. It is going to be a negotiated item, it's going to be another facet of the transaction, that it's going to create chaos, and is going to create a competitive disadvantage for Concord. So, you know, I'm being granular, because I worked in this industry for 40 years, and I can see the problems that'll exist. And we cannot put ourselves in that particular position. I think your report gives many other options that we can fund affordable housing. I am in favor of affordable housing, but I think a 1% transfer tax is not the way to go. Thank you.
John K., 262 Virginia Road. First, I have a question. How much of the current Community Preservation Act goes to affordable housing? I thought that that was actually one of the principal purposes of it, which is already a surcharge on the tax.
Right. The amount of CPA that goes to affordable housing varies per year, but by the state mandated levels, at least, was it 10%? 10%?
That's the minimum, is it?
That's the minimum. That's the minimum. That has to go into recreation and open space, historic conservation, and affordable housing. So in some years, the amount that goes to affordable housing is a little bit more than in other years. But historically, it, I believe, has been about 300,000, if I recall correctly. And I can check on that. But the level that has been historically given to affordable housing is not of a high enough magnitude that would allow us to, to, to proactively reach the town's goals of, of the amount of affordable housing that the town would like to see.
Because one thing that strikes me is that a, a real estate surcharge, real estate transfer tax, it, it's one of these things where it's set up, and in one, in one sense, you'd say, okay, everyone's going to eventually pay it. But on the other hand, in any given year, only a few people pay it. So that, you know, you, you just save the pain. I've got relatively few people who have the pain, that the majority of people don't have to pay it right now. So that it strikes me as being a little bit of, you know, us versus them, we, you know, we, we can make someone else pay the taxes. It also strikes me as being potentially a very large amount of money. That if, if I do the numbering, the gentleman before me did, did the rough estimate, $10,000 per transfer. If there are 300 transfers in a year, that's $3 million. That's a very large amount of money. Then the third, my third point is that, on, from the point of view of a real estate transfer, it's not free money. That you sell your house, you may have a Title V, you have a real estate commission, you may need a new roof, you may have all sorts of other upgrades. There's a, there are large expenses associated with selling a house. And by the way, that proceeds, one gentleman mentioned the burden on the young people who may, who would sell more frequently, the older people, that's their retirement nest egg. So, it's slicing that off. So there's essentially, you know, wait until you get to retirement, or getting ready for retirement, and then just we'll whack your retirement nest egg. It just strikes me as being a little bit of an us versus them syndrome.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Henry Dane, 58 Everett Street. My view of this proposal is not influenced by my attitude toward affordable housing. I was the attorney for the Concord Housing Authority for 15 years, which time the Housing Authority was very active in acquiring property and building affordable housing. I did the 40B projects on Strawberry Hill Road and Bedford Street, and the, the house on Walden Street that built on the Sheehan Land, and the Peter Buckley Building. I also was involved in the financing of the more recent subsidized housing on Walden Street, and on the corner of Old Bedford Road. I was also the attorney for the Acton Housing Authority for about the same period of time. And about a couple of years ago, I fought my way through all of the boards in the town-- And about a couple of years ago, I fought my way through all of the boards in the town of Lincoln to get a local initiative project approved. So, I am familiar with affordable housing, and I am not opposed to it. But the question is, how do you get there? And I'll start with the bomb, and that is, if your median house in Concord is sold for a million and a half dollars, this transfer tax will instantly decrease its value by That's the leverage, that's taking the $10,000 or $12,000 tax, and leveraging it by the amount of money that you would normally borrow to buy that house. So if $10,000 that would have gone to buying the house would have been the basis for 80% mortgage financing, that means that house is now worth $51,000 less, because if the buyer has to pay more, the seller has to get less. The other thing that's very important that the real estate people haven't mentioned is, you cannot borrow that money. The bank will not give you a mortgage for, to pay a transfer fee. So, you're having, people buying a house will pay $10,000 more in cash, and that's normally a big problem for people. Secondly, this proposal makes it impossible for a first-time homebuyer to buy a home in Concord, because it provides that the transfer tax is waived for a first-time homebuyer, but will be a lien on the property for five years. The bank is not going to lend money to somebody who's going to buy a house that has a lien on it. They even insist that you pay off, like municipal betterments, and things of that kind. So, there needs to be a lot more thought that has gone into the details. And if you look at the list of exceptions to the tax that have been made in other places that have been very carefully thought out, such as the 1983 Nantucket Transfer Tax, which was to fund conservation, there is an exemption. At that time, the first $100,000 of the purchase price was exempt from the transfer fee. $100,000 in 1983 is probably $500,000 today. If you want to have the tax be fair, you need to think of having a floor, an exemption. But here's the real problem, and I see it, is the kind of conceptual problem. And that is, what you're doing is you're increasing the cost of living in the town of Concord, which especially affects those who can least afford it. The people who have lived here for a long time, bought their houses for small amounts of money, have seen their taxes going up over the years, without their being able to realize on any of the equity, but they still have to pay the taxes. So you're asking those people, you're making housing in Concord for the people who live here less affordable, so that then you could take the money and create new housing that is affordable for other people. And does that make any sense? I think the answer is no, that it doesn't. And I was, I wrote the report for the committee that was asked to review the Community Preservation Act in 1999, which at that time, the original proposal was that the funding come from a real estate transfer tax. And I would like to read a section from the report that I wrote, which I think poses that dilemma to you. Concord is, of course, also its people. In large measure, because the town is unique and attractive, it is impossible for many to afford to live here. Some of the committee, which is the committee that was working on the CPA, some of the committee members believed that the acquisition of land for conservation purposes, an expenditure for historical preservation, if paid by homeowners through taxes, by making the town more attractive, would also make it more difficult for people of average means to afford to live in town. Measures, no matter how well-intended, which reduce the amount of buildable land, raise the cost of new and existing homes, and increase the real estate tax burden, militate against retaining and attracting a diverse population. If we have an obligation to preserve the land and the historical artifacts of the town, we also have an obligation to the people of all income levels who live in the town. Many of those who have lived here the longest, and are the living heritage of the town, are also those who can least afford the burden of additional taxes on their property. While providing additional affordable housing helps to create diversity, by imposing additional ownership costs on current residents with limited means, it also reduces existing diversity. So, the reasons that the tax affects the existing residents, and I point out that in places like Cape Cod and Nantucket, they have the good fortune, if you will, to have the people who own most of the property not have the ability to vote. Which is a very, I mean, that's what started, that's how Concord became famous, wasn't it? You know, right? They call taxation without representation. They, the people who own the property in Nantucket don't vote, because they don't live there, they just own the property. And then the other portion of that, that's very clever, is to say that the buyer pays it. So again, you people don't pay it, right? You sell your house, some other fool pays it. So, but you do pay it, because it's only a fiction, really, that when you have a transaction which is more expensive for your buyer, that buyer is going to pay you a lower price. So, the answer is, whatever we need to do to increase the amount of affordable housing in this town, imposing a tax of this kind is not the answer.
Thanks. All right, we've got one more article.
Yeah.
My name's Greg Higgins, I live at 51 Cottage Lane, and I'm somewhat reluctant to get up here, because what I might say sounds as if I might be criticizing affordable housing, and I'm not doing that. I've been on the CHDC for several years, and I've been on the CPC Committee, so I've handled these issues, and I have a few questions. My first question is, how are you defining affordable? What's the definition? Using the statutory, or, at the FinCom Committee, it seemed like the answer was not specific, and I'm just wondering how you're answering that question.
So, the way that our committee looked at affordable housing is in two ways. For the sustainable housing inventory, or subsidized housing inventory benchmark of 80% of area median income, so that's one aspect of affordable housing. Then, of course, there's the other aspect, which is the workforce housing, which is folks who are, have the income that is greater than 80% of area median income, up to about 110% of area median income. So we looked at it in two, we didn't take one-size-fits-all approach, we looked at it as two different components, two different definitions of affordable housing, if you will.
But it would be restricted to that, not an open-ended, when we get this back, the funds are, say if a house is $10,000 more than the 110, these funds couldn't be used for that.
Well, in that case, if I understand your question correctly...
I'm trying to define, if we're going to approach the legislature and ask them to approve something, I would assume they're going to ask back, what are some of these things you're asking for here? How are you defining that? So are we going to use the state standards on affordability, like what would take funding from CPC? Are we using those standards? Is that what we're doing?
Right, that would be for the 80% area median income. The area median income is defined by HUD, Housing in Urban Development, they're the ones who come up with that metric.
Thank you. Why are we doing this to buyers? Why don't we just put it on the sellers? I've been working in real estate for more than 40 years in this town, and, you know, graduated from high school here, been here quite a while, and we've been struggling with this for 50 years. And I allowed you, I know you've, I've worked on committees, I'm on committees right now, I don't speak for any of them, but I'm speaking for myself, but what, how is this not being very specific? Your first slide, or your second slide earlier, said that you, this was a broad-reach thing. This is not a broad-reach thing, this is on either buyer-sellers at a transaction time. This is not, why are we not agreeing that we all have to pay this? And get about it? And stop, you know, we tried to say, oh, let's have the developers do it, and if we can do one in 10, we'll keep it to 10%, and that helps, but it doesn't work. I mean, why, when are we going to actually get about funding this, and making it happen, rather than, this is selecting a small group. Certainly in the year in which you buy a house in this town, you're a small group. Why aren't we doing, why do we come up with this very focus on real estate transactions? I mean, it makes me think that when recreation needs funds, are we going to say, well, nope, just the people that use the fields are going to pay for that? We're not, I'm not using the fields, I don't want to pay for it. Are we going to do that here? Or are we going to, you know, our tax base is how we fund the real estate. Why don't, why don't we get about it, and use it on the CPC, and go to 3%, and take those funds, and earmark them? Having sat through those minutes, meetings after meetings of CPC trying to determine, will they want 180,000, can they take 170,000, and doing this, we, inevitably, we didn't put enough funds aside for affordable. Could we not make that extra percent, a percent and a half, whatever we increase it to, specifically earmarked for housing? And that's spread amongst all of us. It's sort of a rhetorical question, I'm asking you to answer it, but why don't we do that? It just seems like the sins of the last 50 years, we're asking just, and why don't we make it sellers? What was the reason?
Well, the sellers do pay the 0.45, 6%.
But why don't this, the sellers, dealing in real estate, the sellers are going to pay this. So why don't we put it on the sellers? Why are we doing it on the buyers? That's being disingenuous. It truly is, and I don't mean that you did it intentionally, but I think the ramifications are, it's disingenuous to do it that way. I'm just trying to shorten up what I did, because somebody else spoke too much. Well, no, well, no, no, but they could do it with the CPC, you know, and make that 3%, and take those funds and earmark them.
We did look at the CPC function, and as I mentioned earlier, the committee felt that that was not going to help us, in terms of the magnitude of what would be needed to meet the goals of the town and residents, that, the goals that the town and the residents have stated, in terms of achieving affordable housing.
And why did they feel, what was the evidence that they used? Where did they get that? Why wouldn't another million a year, every single year, like, I mean, 3 million is great, but that's funds coming right out of a transaction. I happen to believe that maybe the same people will buy, the town, Concord is a very attractive town, and I'm not worried about people wanting to live here and moving to Acton because they don't want to live in Concord. They're going to still, we're still going to sell 200 ex-houses a year in the town, but they will cost more. So if you don't mind, if you don't mind the little guy paying more, then fine, you know, but I'm not sure that the people are, you know, that we're going to suddenly not be able to sell houses, but they'll just cost more, won't they? I mean, that's the bottom line. I mean, that's...
Or they'll sell for less.
Well, they will sell for less, but the number will be higher, the person's profit on it, or gain on it, will be, the sellers. So let's put it on the seller, where it belongs. I think I'm just going to stop. I mean, you did great, you're working really hard, so I hate to be critical at all, but I think you need to think more about it.
Yeah, well, we appreciate the feedback, so thanks.
We're ready to move to the next one.
Ready to move, all right. 26, building permit fee surcharge. This article is too lengthy to put up. Again, you've seen this flow chart, so it won't be labeled that. This is something that really came about from Charles Phillips, and all the work that he did. So in this, kind of in the interest of time, the focus here is really on the fact that it's a progressive approach, larger projects would pay a slightly higher surcharge than smaller projects here. And the committee looked at this, and felt that there would be about $900,000 to $1 million per year in revenue from this strategy. Here is an example of some of the, of kind of the sliding surcharge scale, if you will. You can see at the top, if there was a $20,000 new bathroom, that would end up being $100, $180 in a surcharge, which is right there. And then if it was a $1.5 million home, the surcharge would be $30,000 to help fund affordable housing. So that is kind of, are there any questions on Article 26?
Sorry to keep you guys here. Tom Matthews, 135 Elsinore. Why are we going with such an aggressive move here? Why can't we go in increments? I mean, that's my number one thing with both the transfer tax and this, is that's super, super aggressive. Like, why does the affordable housing now need so much money? Like, that's my biggest concern, is that new growth, now I am speaking on the Board of Assessors, new growth adds a lot to the town every year, and why are we going to make it harder for builders and homeowners to build in town?
So, I think, you know, the, the committee, when we looked at this, we felt that adding $180 to a $20,000 bathroom renovation was not a significant, was not a huge amount of money, that that was a reasonable ask, if you will.
Yeah.
So the committee's perspective on this was that these, these aren't huge growths, it's not going to, are huge incremental changes, it's not going to have a detrimental effect to people improving their homes or building their homes, but it will have a measurable effect on the town's ability to reach their affordable housing goal.
But I mean, you know, I don't know if you've done a renovation recently, but you can't renovate much in today's dollars at those prices, so you're really going to be hitting people with a lot of cost. And like I said at the beginning, I applaud you for the work you've done. Being here right now, I have two and a half kids at home, so it's not easy to be here at these meetings, but I just think that Concord is in such a great position right now, and these measures, these last two measures are so aggressive, that they could be detrimental to our community. I mean, I know a lot of people that have moved four or five times within town, and these taxes, and then people, I mean, my other option was to add it to my house, and fees like this might prevent me to be able to do that. And there are a lot of people who are in my camp, who moved to Concord, who have sacrificed everything to get into this town, and to put on these, such these burdens, I just think is so aggressive, and I don't know why, like, we shouldn't take more time to discuss this in public forum, because if you're going to try and pass stuff like this at town meeting, and town meeting's hard to get to with small kids, you know, I don't know, I think I'm the youngest person in this room, but I'm just saying, it's hard to get to these meetings, and, you know, and we're making such monumental shifts in our town's tax bases. I just want to be heard, because this is super aggressive. I don't know why we just can't take incremental approaches like the Community Preservation Act. I mean, yeah, we'll only raise a million dollars, but it's not going to crush our town, or crush the people that are in it. Like, we're making such aggressive, it's just, this is like, very, very aggressive, and I want everyone to know that, that this is, this is big time, so.
Well, anyway, I think you raised a good point about the public forums, and the Affordable Housing Funding Committee, all of our meetings are open, and they're posted via open-meeting law, and we've had the benefit of having people come to our meetings and speak, and share their perspectives with us. So since September 26th of, geez, what was it, 2018, I think it was, no, 2017, so 2017, you know, we've had our meetings, and they've been posted, so people could, you know, feel free to attend, and we'll have, continue, we'll continue to have meetings, and people can feel free to continue, or to join us at those meetings. So we've had a plethora of opportunities for the public to join us at our meetings, and we'll continue to do that. And that's an important component of hearing people's comments and perspectives, so thanks.
Elise Woodward again. So Todd, I think that your presentation could really be strengthened, if you had a conceptual piece at the start. What are we trying to achieve here? How much money do we... How much money do we need for affordable housing, and what will those dollars get us? And if we look at this over several years as opposed to over the annual cadence of town meeting, what do we need? How, how much funds do we need to raise, and in what increment do we need to do it? And then, and also, also a piece about, with these dollars, how rapidly could we increase our affordable housing numbers? So, I mean, I think the, without the conceptual story, all of these warrant articles, to me, look like one-offs. You know, oh, here's an idea, let's try this. Oh, here's another idea, let's try this. But I think if you could knit it together into conceptual strategy for funding affordable housing, I think that would be a much stronger argument at town meeting.
Great, thanks for sharing that. I mean, the committee did look at that, and we felt that we needed about nine to ten units per year for affordable housing, and that those units would cost about $400,000 per unit, between four and $500,000. And so that's what gets us to the number of about four million to five million dollars a year, and, which is why when we presented our recommendations, our recommendations got us to about that point. Of course, there is one recommendation that, that is not in the mix, and that's the payment in lieu of taxes recommendation. Perhaps that's something that can be visited at a future point, but that's, that's one of the recommendations that was not there.
Charlie Blair, 26 Florio Drive. I'll try to be brief. As far as what Greg was talking about, former speaker was talking about, as far as putting this onto the seller or going to the Community Preservation Act, which I really think is a much better way to do it, because it spreads out across the town. Why, this, this particular slide here, we have somebody coming in to buy a house in Concord, they're going to get hit twice now. They're going to get hit with your transfer tax, and they're going to get hit if they have to renovate, especially the older, larger houses that are here that do need renovations, they're going to get hit twice with this. So I think that, and the other thing is, on the slide that you showed, the four, five, six slide for the excise tax that, well, now, the other part of that is that the governor's trying to double it, and that's going to go to cities and towns for, for...
Climate change.
Climate, thank you. I just forgot, yeah, climate change. So that, that tax would just be another one. So I really think that it should be town-wide if we're going to do it at all. Thank you.
Well, and you know, that's something that we did discuss at the committee, is this, the idea of what you just pointed out, somebody buys a home and they have, they have the real estate surcharge, and then they do a renovation. The committee's feeling about that was that is the individual's choice. They, they can choose to make that renovation or not make that renovation, so it's completely up with them, up to that individual if they want to do that or not, or to what extent they want to do that. We felt that having a blanket approach was, was not the way to go in terms of the CPC for the reasons mentioned previously, so that, that was the committee's feeling on that topic.
Leigh N.K., 262 Virginia Road. I just have a, just a general question. Are some of the, you feel pressure to have a big slush fund for affordable housing, and you mentioned that you want to build ten units a year, and there are going to be a half million dollars per unit? That doesn't sound like affordable housing to me. I think you should take a look at other options. Up in Maine, they have affordable housing, they have factory-built homes that cost far less than a half a million dollars. I don't, I think you should go back to the drawing board and research ways you can, you can build affordable housing that doesn't cost a half a million dollars. I'm talking about one to $200,000.
It's a land cost, unfortunately. Which is what got back to the issues of running out of land. We don't have the land, if you can buy, you know, a lot of land is nearly 300,000, 400,000, 500,000. So that's as much the problem as the cost of building.
We did look at that in like, that's...
Yeah, but if you had very small lots, that should still be affordable. I, I cannot conceive of this town not being able to build affordable housing for less than a quarter million per house.
Well, that is the, that is the reality of the situation. You know, we do not have small lots in Concord. That is something that could be addressed through a zoning, a zoning approach, but when we look at our area, not in Maine and not in other places that are hundreds of miles away, but when we look in our area, the cost of affordable homes in this area, in our municipality, is 400 to 500,000 dollars.
You could always change the ability to do that. Thank you.
Our committee does not have the ability to do that. You know, that would be great, that would be great, and that is a component. Zoning does have to be part of the solution, so we fully agree with you there.
Elizabeth Eldon, 347 Old Bedford Road. I'm also a Realtor in town, we seem to have a group of us here. I was, I'm also a former member of this committee, and I just wanted to suggest that at the beginning of our meetings, we talked a lot about what our goals were and why we were trying to do this, but I feel like you skipped over that really quickly, and it might help to remind town meeting that we were charged to do this, to create affordable housing. No one's going to like the solutions, it's going to be expensive. I would like to see it, like many people said tonight, spread more evenly across everyone in town personally, but I just think it would help to go back, to spend a little more time just explaining to citizens what you're trying to accomplish and why. And then, 40B is a concept that not a lot of people really know what it means or why it creates a burden on a town, so, you know, for Sudbury and Maynard to be below their ten percent, it's, it's a position Concord doesn't want to be in. And I remember Marcia having a chart that showed how many units are being added, when we drop below ten, what we need, maybe something like that would also help people understand what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay, thanks, thanks.
Thank you.
And, you know, one last point that I would just mention, and I, and I feel that it's something that, that does provide a sense of how the committee did look at this in a broad-based, is, is the concept of pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes. The committee looked at that, and we looked at the six largest exempt entities in Concord, and when we looked at that, they have 220 million dollars worth of property, and they don't pay any tax on that. If they paid half of the tax that they are, that would be due on that, that would be 1.6 million dollars, and so we felt that that was something that should be looked at in the future.
Greg Higgins again. I just wanted to clarify something. I think to say that building permit work is elective is obviously true, in the base thought of it, but when you, a lot of people buy homes, and a lot of the first things they're doing are very energy-efficient things, like replace windows, insulate the house, and things like that, and I'm not sure we want to categorize those as electives and charge them at the same rate. I mean, I think, once again, I think if we think this through, do we, do all permits and all items of all permits want to be, feed the same? I mean, we ought to probably think that through, because they're, they're electives, of course, but are they not electives we want people to do?
Todd, thank you very much. I think everybody can see why we haven't solved the problem yet. It's not an easy one. But thank you for your work, very much so. We now are down to our last item, which is number 27, authorizing the transfer of a portion of property at 37, 37B Commonwealth Ave for affordable housing. Kate.
I am Kate Hodges, the deputy town manager. Article 27 seeks authorization to transfer a small portion of the land acquired at last year's town meeting as Jarrow Park to the Housing Authority for the purposes of creating not more than one unit of affordable housing. Article 25 of last year's town meeting authorized the acquisition of the parcels above known as Jarrow Park. It's located at 369 Commonwealth Avenue in West Concord, indicated here with the red stars. The primary purpose of the property's acquisition was to renovate and improve upon the seven acres of land, creating both active and passive recreational areas. However, as discussed at last year's town meeting, it was agreed that a small portion of the property located along Commonwealth Ave would be made available for up to one unit of affordable housing that's also represented in the deed for the property. Since officially, how'd you get that slide? So that's the wrong slide, so, so, I'll just talk. I don't know what happened. Good thing I'm last. Since officially acquiring the land in 2018, the town has been working with Greenman Petersons Incorporated. GPI is currently working with the Department of Planning and Land Management to develop an A&R plan, which will be accepted by the planning board officially subdividing the parcel. The illustration that you would have seen shows the approximate area that will be given to housing. The parcel will be labeled as A2 and consists of approximately 9,500 square feet and will be added to the existing lot, which is owned by the Housing Authority that's located at 365 Commonwealth Ave. This is a really small picture of that map, so I'll just leave that here. GPI will be working over the next several weeks on a comprehensive feasibility study, which analyzes the idea of combining two lots, both housing lots, both Housing Authority lots into one. The town has contracted with GPI to perform several tasks relative to this effort, including conducting a series of site visits to review existing conditions and demarcate existing resource areas, including wetland boundaries, developing a full survey for the property using an existing topographic survey, which is currently in use for the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Phase 2B, and also the Jarrow Recreation Park parcel, reviewing all records, plans, and field conditions in order to assess the potential for home utility connections and sewer service, and finally preparing an official site plan for the home site, showing one proposed unit set a minimum of 12 feet away from the existing home located at 365 Comm Ave. So any future use of the site beyond what I just described, including design, construction, and other needs related to the creation of a home on that parcel, will be the responsibility, both financially and administratively, of the Housing Authority and its partners. This portion of the parcel has not been included in the overall schematic for the design of the Jarrow Park rec area, and therefore has been deemed surplus by the town. Acceptance of this article will allow the town to begin the process of gifting this small section of the property to the Housing Authority, which is consistent with the town's goals for affordable housing, and consistent with the vote taken at the 2018 town meeting. So the town requests your favorable action on Article 27, and I'm happy to answer any questions, or pass around the tiny map.
It's on page 23 of the warrant.
Great.
There are any questions?
Great, thank you.
And thank you all. I think we have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you all very much.